Everyone, we're gonna start. Wanna be quiet, please? I wanna welcome everyone tonight for our zoning board appeal for town of Wayham. It is Wednesday, 6:30 PM, and we are at the room 520 Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. I wanna call the meeting to order. Before I go any further, we're not gonna see you until next year. I wanna wish everyone happy Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year. Looking forward for a peaceful, prosperous year, healthy for everyone. Best of luck for next year, for us, for all of us and our country. And God bless us and bless the U.S., of course. For that being said, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. We can make a roll call. My far right, Mr. Troy Larson. Our drug Jim Akabachi. My left, Mr. Chris Conti. Mr. Richard Sample is on Zoom. He's not feeling well, but he'll be joining us. Ms. Devenese is out. So throughout the night, Mr. Conti will be taking her chair, and we'll be voting throughout the night in her seat. We're gonna just start some quick business. Just for the record also, the Assistant Town Planner, Mrs. Sonia Repose is here. Our Bidding Commissioner, Mr. Paul Turner, is here as well. And our future Town Planner, I don't know if he's a Town Planner, yeah.
Land Use Coordinator.
Land Use Coordinator Josh is here.
And Department Assistant.
And Department Assistant. You gotta write them down for me. All right, very well.
We love correcting you.
We're gonna go for the minutes for 11:13, 2024.
Been reviewed, there's been some emails going back and forth with a few corrections. It's been corrected. Sonia, I started writing my notes to you from the meeting on the old minutes so I could put a new front page, fund this, I'll sign them.
Or you can just correct them.
I just messed it up, that's it. Take the motion to accept and sign as presented.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Akabachi. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee Aye, it goes. It's a yes, so 5-0-0.
We have Richard online, right?
Yeah, he just said yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, we're gonna continue public hearing 54-24 Yusuf Enterprises LLC for 2888 Cranberry Highway. Anyone here for this LLC?
I have one online, wait a second.
All right, who's online?
This is a, uh, Rico.
My line is...
Okay, sir, you online?
Yes, sir.
They're in, they just need to unmute.
What's that?
They're all set.
Yes, yes, sir, you name an address first.
Okay, for the record, my name's Bob Rego. I'm with Riverhawk Environmental. Our address is 511 West Grove Street, Middleborough, Mass. This is a continued hearing from the last meeting of the ZBA. We were waiting for comments back from consultant on the site plan review. So the amount of money that's required has been determined and funded, but we have not as of yet received comments back from the consultant. So I'm unsure how to...
So we need to extend, we need to extend and pick this up in two weeks at the first of the year.
Are we meeting, we're not, we're not meeting on the 25th, right?
No. We don't meet again until next year, so...
All right, would that be good until January 8? Is that enough time for you, first of the year?
Yeah, if we get the comments back, absolutely, yes, yep.
Okay, and you guys been in touch with Mr. Cudero?
I was briefly, yeah, before we had received funds, word sent over.
Okay, hopefully you guys work it out together so we can wrap it up at the next meeting. Okay, can we get a motion to continue?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion to continue 54-24 Enterprise LLC 2888 Cranberry Highway till January 8, 2025. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee Aye, it carries. All right, we'll see you on January 8.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this guy's gonna give us a minute. Eddie Glenn Charlie Road. Anyone here from Eddie Glenn Charlie Road? Actually, he just needed to...
Yeah, they're in the box.
We needed to see the picture of the septic.
And you put one with a stamp on it?
They're in the box, yes.
In the box?
You wanna see it?
Yeah, please.
There's a large one and some reduced sizes.
Is this Enos? No.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
McGee?
Are we looking at...
Enos, yes.
Just let me see the first one.
I think that's it.
I saw the one that's not stamped, it's fine.
Yeah, I saw the unstamped one, too. I got the, does anybody wanna...
I saw it.
Say a c...
No, I saw it.
You saw that? Everybody is good on that?
Yep.
I'm good.
All right, we're very good.
So that was the reason that they needed to put it where they needed to put it.
Yeah. So just let's get a quick motion.
So we wanna move to approve as presented, accept the plans and approve... And they were looking for a variance, I believe.
They already got it, last time.
We gave them the variance subject to this.
Right.
So all we need to do is vote to accept this.
All right, we move, so move to grant the plan accepted by Mr. Akabachi for Eddie Glenn Charlie Road. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee Aye, that carries, thank you. Gonna move to public hearing. We have nine public hearings, so please be as specific as possible in the hearing, as efficient as possible. And otherwise, we'll be here until the morning. And make your comment short and effective as much as you can. And don't feel comfortable to take the floor until I give you the floor. So we're gonna start with the first one. 57-24 Deborah Bourne, various or special permit for 75 Edgewood Drive. Mrs. Bourne, or Miss Bourne?
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass, 02571, to consider petition number 57-24 for a variance or a special permit from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1351 and Section 1352, under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Deborah Bourne of 75 Edgewater Drive, Wayham, Mass, proposing a second floor addition to the dwelling located at 75 Edgewater Drive, Wayham, Mass. This appears on Assessor's Map 35, lots 11 and 12 in the R30 zoning district.
Okay, name and address, sir?
Good evening, members of the board, George Kikitas, GS Design Group, 215 Onset Avenue, representing Deborah Bourne, who is present in the audience right now.
Okay, so let's hear it.
You want that one, 'cause it's got the big plan square.
I have a couple things I wanna hand out to you real quick.
Okay.
Why they wanted with the plan? I mean, with the application?
It wasn't able to really show point that well. So essentially, the existing house is a one-story house built in the 60s, has a large overhang for the roof on that first floor level. We're adding a second floor to the existing footprint. Now, the site plan that I just handed out to you shows the nonconformity of what we're doing. Essentially, the front yard setback is 20 feet, and the existing footprint is 19.2 feet, which is essentially eight inches. The new addition on the second floor would be eight inches into the 20-foot setback. Now, that elevation's on a diagonal, so it goes from eight inches from the right-hand corner to like zero by the middle of that elevation.
Okay. So you need an eight-inch variance or 10?
Yes, so what we did, we came up with a solution before we had to come to you folks. And essentially, we did a swale. We set that gable end from the front elevation 10 inches. So the very base, you have a little swale of shingles that covers up that eight inches. And the building department wasn't accepting that because we're putting a shingle over that eight inches, so... Since we're here, we'd like to go back to our original request that we build a little corner in that eight-inch setback. And I do have one more handout, if it helps, that just shows those two variances. That was proposed in the solution in the next page.
Come on, sir, I got it.
Paul, is the only thing we're here for is that eight inches?
That's it.
That's the only thing we're here for?
Yeah.
I'd like to expedite this application and I make a motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Before we go forward, anyone in the public wanna speak in favor against this matter? Anyone in public? Okay, I hear none. We go with Jim's motion to close. Sir, before we close, any discussion? Nothing? Okay, can we get a motion to close?
You got the motion, need a second.
I need a second.
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, I, it carries, thank you, as presented.
I make a motion to approve. That was the motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Don't mind us, we've been months out of that, so we cannot forget the process. Okay, that's motion to close. Motion to grant by Jimmy. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, and... Okay, we have a second by Troy. You wanna go by the plans dated August 13, 2024, or the other ones?
The other ones that...
What's the date? What's the date on the other one?
Is it the big plan?
It's the reduced plan, the date is...
It doesn't have a revision date, though. 8/13.
He doesn't want the revision, we're voting, we're voting...
Okay, so you're okay with the 8/13, 2024 plan, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion to grant based on the plans drafted by Bremen Engineering on 8/13/2024. The finding is that the case meets statute requirement of Mass. Journal, laws, chapter 48, section 10. And do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Commissioner, I'm gonna trust your eyes because I'm not there to see the prints. Does everything look up to snuff? Who's speaking?
Richard, Richard is.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Yes, they do.
Commissioner, I was asking you.
He said yes, Rich.
Okay, thank you. Aye.
Richard's aye, Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee Aye, it carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the list, oh, you took my agenda. I gave my agenda away.
Did you put it in, did you? Did you clip it into here?
Yeah.
This is probably even the back of this. Trying to be, trying to be quick, and we, the faster I go, the behinder I get.
Okay, next public hearing, 58-24 Gray Chiuak, Chikuakski, 15 Wayham Lake Shore Drive. Yes, sir. I can't pronounce your name right, sorry for misspelling.
Swakowsky.
Swakowsky?
Mr. C.
Hi, have a seat, please.
That was 5-0-0, the last one, correct?
Correct.
Pardon?
Nah, that's a different case. Just give us a minute to get our things together.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass, 02571, to consider petition number 58-24 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 625, under the Wayham zoning bylaws to Gary Swakowsky of 15 Wayham Lake Shores Drive, Wayham, Mass, seeking to rebuild a two-car garage in the front setback of the principal dwelling located at 15 Wayham Lake Shores Drive, Wayham, Mass. This appears on Wayham Assessor's Map 120, lot 104 in the R130 zoning district.
Name and address, sir?
Gary Swakowsky, 15 Wayham Lake Shore Drive.
Okay, let's, all right, let's hear it. So what are you trying to do?
I'm trying to have my garage rebuilt. That was damaged by a fire. Exact same thing as it was before. And it was a 20-year-old garage, and I just wanna rebuild it.
Yeah, and apparently, it's in the front of the house, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and in that matter, you need a variance?
Yes.
Okay. Troy, you got a question on that matter?
Nope.
Jimmy?
No questions.
Richard?
No.
Chris?
Uh, no.
Paul, you wanna add anything?
No, very straightforward.
Yeah, anyone in the public wanna speak in favor or against this matter? Pardon, oh, I hear none. Anything else you wanna, you wanna add anything, sir, before we close?
Again, I mean, it's been there for 20 years. I let a friend put a car in it. Car caught fire. Wanna rebuild it. What else are friends for? Yeah, 1977 Chevelle Supersport.
Oof.
Zero, everything's gone. That's too bad.
All right, motion to close, please.
Got it.
Okay, we have a motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, it's closed.
Motion to grant?
Motion to grant as presented and to be built according to plans drafted by Chad and Associates, Inc., dated August 4, 2004. Okay? And the findings is that he meets statute requirement of MGL 48, section 10. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, I, Nazee, it carries. You're good.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Thank you.
Next one, 59-24 Kathleen O'Brien, special per, or variance for 5 Medina Drive.
Let me get it read in.
Do you want me to present?
Let me read it first.
I give us a minute.
Takes longer to read some of these in than it does to grant them, you know? But now we got you, so we can get the chopsticks out. The Wayham, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass, 02571, to consider petition number 59-24 for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 621, and Article 13, Section 1351 and Section 1352 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Kathleen M. O'Brien, care of Bradley Bertolo of J.C. Engineering, Inc., of 2854 Cranberry Highway, Wayham, Mass, seeking demolition of an existing addition and foundation and install new foundation and rebuild addition at the dwelling located at 5 Medina Drive, Wayham, Mass. This would appear on Wayham Assessor's Map 26, lot 50E-2 in the R30 zoning district.
Okay, Mr. Bertolo, let's hear it.
Good evening, Brad Bertolo with J.C. Engineering. We have before you requesting a special permit to reconstruct a 6.5-foot wide by 11.1-foot-long bathroom that's off the rear of the structure. The portion of this bumpout has some foundation on it, under it. The rest of it's under a sonotube, so the property owner would like to reconstruct the entire six-and-a-half-by-11-foot on a new concrete foundation. And at the same time, blend the roof of this addition with the roof over the adjacent porch. The current structure is sitting 5.3 feet from the property line, so it's currently nonconforming. We're rebuilding the exact same footprint, which believe would be by right special permit, by right building permit, but the roof itself will expand in height slightly. It won't go any higher than the existing roof of the main structure, but because the roof is expanding in height, a special permit would be needed.
You're extending a nonconforming, existing nonconforming.
Correct. Pretty much all replacement structure is over existing footprint, and we're maintaining the setback off the side.
Okay, very well. Questions, Troy?
I have no questions.
Jimmy?
No questions.
No questions.
Richard?
No questions.
All right, anyone in the public wanna comment on this matter, in favor or against? I hear none.
Motion to close the public.
One second. You're good?
All good.
Pretty straightforward, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, it's existing nonconforming. Motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. Motion?
Thank you.
No, while we close, you don't wanna, you don't wanna approve?
Public hearing, now we gotta move to a grant.
All right, we're gonna move to grant. And are we accepting as a special permit, being not substantially detrimental? Or a variance, what do you guys feel like?
Make it a special.
I think it's special permit.
Okay, very well. Let's adopt it as a special permit to granting a relief on 1351, 1352. Do I have a motion on that?
So moved.
So moved by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. On the special permit, what's the wishes?
Grant.
Motion to grant by Mr. Akabachi based on engineering plan drafted by J.C. Engineering dated...
October 15.
October 15, 2024. And the finding is not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. And do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Second by Troy, all in favor, say aye, Troy.
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazee, aye, carries. Thank you, Mr. Bertolo.
All right, thank you.
No chopsticks for you tonight, mister.
I'll be back, don't worry.
You'll be back with another one?
60-24 Michael and Leanna Dancy for 2 Seashore Lane.
Sooner or later, somebody's gonna give us a tough one.
Is it Seashore Lane or Seahorse Lane?
Seahorse.
Seahorse Lane, okay.
The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Multi-Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass, 02571, to consider petition number 60-24 for a special permit or a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, and Article 13, Section 1356 and Section 1357 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to Michael and Leanna J. Dancy, care of David M. Davignon, P.E. of Schneider and Davignon and Leone, Inc., of 81A County Road, Matapoyset, Mass, seeking demolition of existing home and foundation, new two-bedroom modular singular family home on elevated concrete piers, first and second floor, located at 2 Seahorse Lane, Wayham, Mass. This will appear on Assessor's Map 52, lot N1B, and a portion of lot N1A in the R30 zoning district.
All right, so name and address?
My name is David DeVignan, from Schneider, DeVignan, Leone, 81A County Road, Matapoyset. I'm here representing the owners. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to submit two letters of support from the immediate director.
These are butters of our neighbors.
Director butter on the northeast and across the street to the south. Actually, there's only a butters, or a butt, or be across the street from the property.
One Seahorse and four Seahorse Lane. For the record, both letters are in favor.
All right.
Are not objecting.
I will be brief. So this is a redevelopment of a residential house lot. We have a cottage built in 1930, according to the assessor's records. The cottage is 24 by 30. It's near ground level. We are located in a velocity zone, so the house cannot be renovated more than 50%. Its wall passes time, so the proposal is to demolish the house and build a house 24 by 36. And generally speaking, in the same location. The existing house is nonconforming to the rear and the street setback. We are proposing to improve the setbacks. The current dwelling overhang is 8.8 feet to the rear. The proposed overhang will be improved to 9.2. The existing dwelling itself, in the rear, we're matching the back of the house at 10.2 feet off the rear property line. Again, to that rear property line, we have letter of support from the butter. And the other variance for setbacks of the street, currently, the house is 15.5 feet off the street. We're actually proposing the house at 15.8 feet off the street, so we're improving that. But we do have a height differential from existing to where we have to be to meet FEMA, a 13-foot change. So we have the staircase coming across the front towards the street, and that's where our variance is needed for up to 3.7 feet from the street line for the staircase. We also have a cantilever deck across the front where they would come out onto that cantilever deck and then access the stairs and come down to the ground level. So the last variance we need is a floor area ratio. Obviously, it'd be increased because we're adding a second floor and we're eight feet wider on the building. This project has been reviewed by the planning board. Seahorse Lane was improved so that we partly do this. We also have conservation commission approval. We attach that, and we have board health approval. So with that, if you have any questions?
All right. Is 4, the house in front of it, belongs to it, too? Or it's separate? There's a 2 and a 4, the one in front of it?
This is 2, and then the only other house that is on the same street is 4, the next one further down. And 4 actually wraps around the lot on the east and the north sides.
Okay.
So, excuse me, through you. So in the application, you say, in your presentation, you said on lot N1B and a portion of N1A.
Yes.
N1B and N1A contiguous and owned by the same people?
N1A and N1B are not owned by the same, no. N1A is the butter. N1A and N2 are owned by Paula Bliss.
So you're putting a, you're putting portion of this on the, what do you got? Some kind of a cross-easement happening, or?
No, when we, when we did the survey, it was discovered...
We own that now.
Yes, that, what we show on the plan is what's owned by the applicant. If you were to go through the exhibits, you'll see that there's an A&R plan in the packets, dated May 24, 2024.
So... So the applicant does or does not own N1A?
We do. N1A is the piece right here.
N1A is the one closer to the water?
N1A is between Cremisa and the house.
No, this is N1A right here.
Oh. We only own original lot and then the extra lot between Cremisa and our house. And I thought it was.
Nothing for the assessors. The assessor's map may not be accurate.
Pardon me? The assessor's map what?
May not be accurate. It isn't accurate.
All right, so you, but you own N1B?
Yes.
All right, and your project is on N1B?
That is correct.
It's not touching N1A. I believe N1A is number 4, the house number.
That's correct, yes.
Because then it's wetland.
Yes.
Then it's wetland.
Sorry.
There is a house further down the street on N1A. That property contains two properties, N1A and N2, and it does have wetlands as you head west, east.
Right. So it's that, I believe the N1A is the house I asked you about, number 4. That must be it.
N1A is 4, yes.
Okay. Do you own them, the same?
No, she does not own N1A.
All right, very well.
But they're putting part of their.
No, it's not.
Construction on, it says on N1, N1A.
Are you, sir, what's your name again? I'm sorry.
David.
David, the structure, is it going on N1A, a piece of it? Okay, it's all on N1B?
If you go to the exhibit that is the survey plan, the A&R plan, that would clearly show you what is not our property and what is our property.
Where is the A&R plan? I can't.
It is after the photographs.
This one right here with the colors, no?
No. If, in your packets, it's after the photographs, then the deed, then immediately after the deed, it's an 11 by 17 plan.
I got it, I got it, okay.
That shows you the existing conditions as of today.
Yeah, yeah, I see it.
Parcel A.
See, Jimmy?
N1A is a pork chop type lot.
Right.
So N1A has, does N1A go all the way out to Cremisa Road?
It does.
And I see dotted lines between, it's showing with three lots, it used to be like three lots, and now it's all combined into one. So number 4 is on N1A.
That is correct.
And I'm looking at the plan here, and I see, so you're 11 feet 9 inches from your own property line with the existing dwelling?
Currently, the overhang is 8.8 feet off the property line, but the dwelling itself is 10.2. That's what the A&R shows, the 10.2 dimensions from the building.
To the side.
To the side, yeah, but on the.
It's in the rear.
Oh, the side, 11.9, yes.
11.9, and that's to your own property line?
That is to our property line, yes. There's a fence just off the line.
Okay, and the 10 feet 2 inches is to the abutters property line?
Well, both are to the abutter, the same abutter.
They're both to the abutters property, exactly. But the 10 foot, where's the north, south, eastern, west? Okay, the 10 foot 2 inches is the north side of the house?
That's correct.
And the 11 foot 9 is the east side of the house?
That is correct.
Southeast or whatever, you know, if you want to, okay. So in the, in the public notice and in your presentation, it included and a portion of lot N1A.
Yes.
Is the and a portion of lot N1A incorrect?
It's incorrect as of today because the, that portion of N1A was, which is shown on that plan as parcel A, was conveyed for a dollar from the abutter to our clients.
Where's that, so you have possession of it?
Yes.
Where's that deed for it?
Yes, this plan has been recorded.
Are that a release deed for a dollar?
Yes. So what happened in the survey, if you go to the assessor's map, parcel A doesn't exist on the assessor's map. It shows our client's property abutting Cremisa Road, but our survey found errors in prior survey plans. And we found, you see, if you follow that dash line all the way up north?
I'm following you now, yeah.
So that dash line is how it's shown on the assessor's map, it's incorrectly shown. So we found this triangular strip that my partner, Matt Leon, who's professional answer there, that parcel, that strip is owned by lot N1A. Well, they didn't, they offered it to our client so that we could put the septic system on, on that parcel. And so we went to the planning board. They refused to sign the A&R plan until the road was upgraded, and now this plan shows the road was upgraded to proper width, suitable for the fire chief. We did that, then went back to the planning board, got them to sign this plan, and then we kept proceeding with the project.
How big is lot N1A? How many square foot, square footage?
That's A, that's the neighbor, right?
I know, I know. How many square footage they gave N1B?
1,464.
They gave him 1,400?
1,464 square feet, correct.
What's the zoning there?
That's.
That's R30, isn't it?
It's R30, yes.
And the planning board gave you that?
Yes.
You're gonna need a variance for N1A, now it's a nonconforming.
The, according to the assessor's map, they conveyed something that didn't exist.
So the, excuse me for putting in, but so N1A always showed as 18,855 or whatever it shows on this plan here, I think that says 885. And the 1,464 that got conveyed were never picked up by the assessors or?
That's correct, it didn't exist.
Well, it existed, it existed.
Well, in reality, it exists, but not on paper.
Yeah.
And when you go to the assessor's map.
On the tax records, it didn't exist. Nobody collected any taxes on it.
That's, that's correct. So the dash line, N1A, didn't have the piece that it now shows towards Cremisa Road either?
Because they had straightened the road out.
Right, there was a, there was a change.
Man, man, excuse me, you gotta hold on. State your name first for the record.
Leanna Dancy.
Okay. When you have a comment, you have to direct it to us, not to him.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, so just, when I give you the floor, you could speak. Paul, what do you think of that?
I wasn't aware what happened out back. I'd have to look at it.
But you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, yeah.
Now it's a nonconforming lot.
It was, it was nonconforming.
It was nonconforming to start with, and they made it less. They didn't have the excess area to give away.
All right, convince me again with that, with that given, existed, not existing, it did exist, didn't exist?
It was, it was never on paper. If you go to the assessor's records, they showed, if, go right to the, we have in one of the exhibits, we have the assessor's map, okay? If you go to the exhibit figure 3, it shows the assessor's map, and it shows our lot, clearly highlighted cross-section. And you can see how this map shows that my clients, our clients, own 2 Cremisa Road Edge, which wasn't true because the line on this map is incorrect. It was never correct. It's further to the west, which created this no man's land that nobody was claiming. And this lot originally came out of the bigger piece. So the only person that could own it, once the survey was resolved, was N1A. They owned from Cremisa Road to the water. Then this lot came out of it, but the deed wasn't, between the survey work and the deeds way back 50, 60 years ago, something was done in error. We discovered.
Did you ever end up doing a confirmatory deed to fix it?
I'm not an attorney. We let her, my client hired an attorney, and the abutting property owner was an attorney, and the attorneys worked out the deed issues, but in my partner's opinion, who's professional answer there, the only way to resolve it was to go to the planning board and show the true line and convey it out.
Yeah, absolutely, that's the right way to do it, but there's procedures to do. Are you, are you eventually gonna get a loan on that property to build it?
You need, you need to borrow money from a bank.
No.
Okay.
Lucky you.
Yeah, because if we, if we decide to grant you this variance, you're gonna have a problem getting a loan or eventually selling it because it's a little confusing.
Yes. One thing I would like to say, if you may, if I may, when we did the A&R plan, yes, our client gained 1,464 square feet, so did the abutting property. Their lot increased, not decreased, from the A&R plan.
I know, but lot N1A is decreased.
No, it got, it increased from our survey finding the error, actually increased their lot area, did not decrease it. They picked up that small piece along Cremisa Road because it wasn't shown on the assessor's map, and they weren't getting taxed for it. So they had to correct their deed as well.
Right, but it's still under the zoning required area, which, which is, I'm not gonna get into it.
If I may add?
Yes, ma'am.
This is one attorney Jillian Morton was representing?
Yes.
I think she wanted to sit on, sit in on this case.
Is she in?
If she's not on Zoom, I just have a note here and a message from her, but I think they're about to land, and she hasn't been able to Zoom in. But, and I'm not sure if it's gonna help, but I can confirm the planning board activity about the A&R. Nothing else, obviously, I don't know anything about the assessor's office activity.
I understand, they did, the planning board did what they're supposed to do.
They did approve the A&R.
I'm not saying they didn't. However, there's a procedure with the zoning. Why don't we table this until attorney Jillian comes in?
I was just going to ask you, Mr. Chairman, if we could just table this so that Jillian?
Let's table it. Just go back in your seat until she lands and she goes on Zoom.
I'm sorry for interrupting.
Yeah. Before you go, hold on.
On this plan, on the south side of the lot, on the next lane, on Seahorse Lane, they show an existing gravel driveway on this plan here.
We show, yes, an existing gravel roadway, we call it.
Okay, existing gravel.
And there is, there's another gravel driveway.
Roadway, correct, and then?
That peels off to the south.
Paved apron, gravel driveway. I see a paved apron going into a gravel driveway to, apparently in the butter.
Yes.
So that existing gravel roadway, is that what your client uses as their driveway?
No, currently, they use it for access to the lot, but they park in the grass.
Where do they park their cars? Get my question.
It's, can I?
Ask the chairman.
Just gotta keep it down.
It's okay if I speak?
Yeah, go ahead.
The road was originally a dirt road, about 8 to 10 feet wide. We were requested to make it 20 feet wide, dig down 12 inches, put a gravel road.
For the fire truck.
With the inside drainage.
The question is, where do you park, where do you park, where did you park before the road was upgraded?
Well, we parked before the road up, was upgraded, was on the grass. Now we kind of park on the gravel road because it's 20 feet wide, or we park on the grass.
Just, I'm just getting everything out there because.
Sure.
So it looks to me like we've got, the town never took this Seahorse Lane.
No, it is a private way.
No, it's private.
So the town never took it?
Mm-hmm.
It's never gonna.
Huh?
And it's never gonna.
The town's, on either side, they could petition to, you know, move their lots, what's it, 20 feet wide?
35 feet wide.
35, so they could each take 17 and a half feet of it and move their property lines, but I'm just.
It's not gonna help with.
It's not, it's not helping this, but the point is, is that they got no place to put their cars if they don't use that. So they're parking on the street, basically.
We are proposing a formal crushed stone driveway on the site, yes.
You can't park on that parcel A that you took with the 1,400 square feet?
That is, currently, it's wooded, mostly wooded, on the west side. It's clear now? Okay. When I go into the site, I park right next to the house. I pull onto the site, it's grass.
Yeah, I get it.
You can certainly pull in and park there.
All right, you know what? Let's work for, let's wait for attorney Moore.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, well, yeah. Everybody keep their thing, and we'll, we'll table your.
Okay.
Before you go, is there anyone in here is in favor of this project? Anyone here in favor? I know there's two abutters in favor. You in favor, sir? Just for the rec, I hate to have you come forward. If you wish to, I need your name for the record. If you wish, it's gotta be on the mic, unfortunately. Sorry. Just your name and address for the record.
Bob Gleason at 1 Seahorse Lane.
Okay, and you are in favor of this project?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yours is one of the letters that we have, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
We're the abutters, yeah.
Okay, anyone against this project? It's always good for that.
Yes.
All right, let's table this.
Okay, thank you.
Getting sent to your room with supper. Robert Stone, okay, 6124.
All right, let's move forward to, Robert, 61-24, Robert Stone, variance, 12 Kennedy Street.
Just keep, you're keeping, they're keeping the paper from the last one, just don't mix them up when you hand them back, please. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 61-24 for a variance from the requirements of Article 6, Table 625, Note 2, under the Wayham zoning bylaws, to Robert Stone of 4 Lantern Lane, North Reading, Mass., seeking to replace the existing 10-foot by 14-foot dilapidated shed with a new 10-foot by 14-foot shed in the same location at the dwelling located at 12 Kennedy Street, Wayham, Mass. This would appear on Wayham assessor's map, 78-2 lot 130, in the R30 zoning district.
Name and address, sir?
Robert Stone, 4 Lantern Lane, North Reading, Mass.
Okay.
I'm the owner.
Want to tell us what are you doing?
So we have a shed that was constructed in 1998. There's a building permit in there, actually, for the shed. It's falling apart. I mean, if the roof is leaking, I'm starting to get rodents in it. I just want to replace it. We're getting a, you know, from a shed company to replace it. If you look at the map, you'll see that there's a 30-foot no-work zone from the river that basically goes in front of the house, so I can't put anything behind the house, even if I had the room. So, I mean, basically, I'm here to get a variance to, so I can replace this shed and improve the property, you know, area.
So you're saying your hardship is the wetland in the back, that's why you can't put it on the back? And you're doing the shed the same footprint, the same size?
Correct.
New shed for old shed?
New shed.
New shed for old shed?
Yes.
Permission, and why would that need a variance?
It's in front of the house.
Even if it's existing?
Mm-hmm.
There and replace, you're gonna need it, all right?
Another simple one, then.
All right, anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? Anyone in the public for this matter in support, against? I hear none, but we stop questions. Troy, do you have questions? Jimmy? Chris? Richard, you have any questions on that matter?
All set.
I don't either.
Move to close the public portion of this hearing.
Got a motion to close 60, I lost, I lost count here.
6124.
6124, 12 Kennedy Street, by Jimmy. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. It's closed. Okay, wishes on decision.
I make a motion to grant, as requested, to remove the dilapidated shed and replace it with a new shed, 10 feet by 14 feet, in the exact same footprint.
Okay, as per plan, drafted by, I hate this more. Robert, oh no, who, who did, who's the engineer in there?
DeVignan.
Matthew, what?
It's Schneider DeVignan in Leon.
Schneider DeVignan in Leon?
Yes.
When was that?
Hey, I have a larger map.
Yeah, okay. Can I have it, please? It's supposed to be in file, but let me see this. Okay, very well.
Glad it's not Can We Catch Him in How?
All right. All right, it's dated 10/24/2024 by Matthew Leoni. And the findings is, it does meet statute requirement. It meets the hardship and statute requirement of MGL 40A, Section 10. So that's the motion by Jim, right?
Correct.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
The one we just did.
Aye.
Myself, Nazee, aye. It carries, thank you.
Thank you.
61-24, 61-24.
62-24, Julie Sheldon, 13 Butler Street.
Better let me get, oh, everything in the right place. We have a very mean department assistant. If we don't get everything back right, we exonerate. We want 62-24.
Correct.
Sheldon. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition number 62-24 for a special permit, or a variance, from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, and Article 13, Section 1352 and Section 1353 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Julie A. Sheldon of 160 Grove Street, Wellesley, Mass., seeking to build a 14-foot-by-20-foot, single-story addition at the dwelling located at 13 Butler Street, Wareham, Mass. This appears on Wareham assessor's map 7, Lot 158, in the R30 zoning district.
All right, name and address, ma'am?
Hi, Julie Sheldon, 160 Grove Street, Wellesley, and 13 Butler Street, Wareham.
All right, let's hear what you're trying to make.
So I have a non-conforming structure and I'm interested in addition, moving out the back of it, that will continue with the same plot line. Because it's only 25 feet across, it's not possible to build at least 10 feet from each side. So it's, the setbacks are not within code. And also, because the house itself is very small in terms of the area of square footage added, it's, it's slightly more than the allowed percentage.
All right. Just let me look at these papers, please.
Wow, you could put a nice spaghetti factory in there.
So your house on the back, you want to add to the front?
No, the house is on the fr, well, front of the lot facing the street and I want to add to the back.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes.
And you adding 20 by 14?
Yeah, so the, the rooms right now are very small. I can't even fit a kitchen table in the kitchen. So I'd like to have a space where I can do things with, with family.
All right. And you doing the second story or one story?
Not just one story.
All right. Commissioner, this is an existing non-conforming, so we could, we could do 1352 right.
Correct.
Questions by Troy?
I have no questions.
Jimmy?
None.
Chris?
No questions.
Richard?
All set.
All right, and myself. Anyone on the public is in favor of this matter? In favor? You want to state your name, I don't. All right, anyone against this matter? Hearing none, let's move to close.
So moved.
I have a second to close.
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazee, aye. It's closed. All right, you guys want to act upon it as a special permit?
Yes.
You will relieve on 1352.
Yeah. I make a motion to treat this as not detrimental to the neighborhood and therefore grant a special permit for application 62-24 for a 14-by-20-foot addition, single-story, at 13 Butler Street.
All right, first, on the waiver to act as a special permit, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Nazee, myself, aye. It carries special permit. On the special permit, do you have a motion?
Same, under the same motion.
Motion to grant based to be built according to surveyor Edward Jacobs on the plan dated October 11th, 2024. So you have to build that out. It's exactly like the plans you submitted, okay? Do I have a second on that special permit?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And myself, aye. It carries 500.
Santa Claus tonight, we're giving everything out.
Thank you so much.
Christmas coming.
I don't know if it was the, the-
All right, very well, that's, that's Butler Street. 63-24, Bruce Tobin, for 55 East Boulevard.
Is this the one we're on, 61-24? If only Congress could act so ruthlessly efficient, huh? Here's one for you, here's one for Chris. That one might have the bigger plan, I don't know. They always say chairman.
Yeah, because it's a big plan.
It's got the big plan, so give him the one with the big plan.
I can't see, thank you.
You got the, you got the good eyes.
Yeah.
I guess we all have a big plan. I need to read, don't I? So we can proceed. Tobin. The zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11th, 2024, 6:30 PM in room 520 of Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571, to consider petition 63-24 for a special permit, or a variance, from the requirements of Article 6, Table 628, and Article 13, Section 1351 and Section 1352 of the Wareham zoning bylaws, to Bruce Tobin of 14 Briarwood Road, Brantree, Mass., seeking to remove an existing old porch frame and to build a new porch in the same location and footprint at the dwelling located 55 East Boulevard, Wareham, Mass. This would appear on Wareham assessor's map 1, lot W4, in the Anset Village 2 zoning district.
All right, who's online?
For the record, my name's Bob Rego with Riverhawk Environmental. I live at 326 Glen Charlie Road in Wareham.
Okay, want to thoughts? What are you doing, sir?
Ah, yes. So on behalf of their clients, Mr. Tobin and Mrs. Tobin, we are proposing to replace a deck that's on the eastward side of the property. Its current deck is in place and they're looking to just replace it in its exactly same location that it currently exists. It's a long, broad cove, so it's very close to the, to the water. And it's up, elevated on pilings above, above the water surface. And it actually, when the tide comes in, it goes underneath the deck. So they're just looking to rebuild that deck in its same exact location. And it's an existing non-conforming structure. Its side setback is only four tenths of a foot at its closest point off the, off the property.
All right, we have the same situation. It's an existing non-conforming. We could act upon it as a special permit if we wish to. A question, Troy? Jimmy?
Did I hear him say that the setback right now is four tenths of a foot? Wow.
That's correct, yes.
So you can put your toothbrush out the window and get the neighbor to put the toothpaste on it?
Yes, yes. It's very close. It's only 4,118 square foot.
Yeah, I know, that's, I get it. It happens down there. It's existing and you're not looking to make it worse. Thank you. No, no further questions.
Chris?
I'm all set.
Richard?
All set.
Good. Anyone on the public want to speak in favor of this matter? Anyone against? I hear none. Okay, let's move to close.
So moved.
You have a motion to close by Jim. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Close. Okay. If the board feel not so detrimental, we give relief on 1351 and 1352.
As a special permit?
Yep.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to act upon this matter as a special permit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazee, aye. It's a special permit. Wishes? Wishes on a special-
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant by Jim, finding not substantially detrimental by, to the neighborhood to be built according to plans signed by Robert Rego, dated 5/29/2024. Any discussion before we take the vote? I hear none. Do I have a second on this matter?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazee, aye. It carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Which one was that?
That was 62-24.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Jimmy Morton is on line. If you would like to take that for-
Want to bring that other one back?
All right. Want to come back forward, please? All right, we'll bring him back. To Seahorse Lane, Michael and Diana Dancy, 60-24. All right, public hearing still open. Counselor, are you there?
I'm here.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Thanks for being flexible tonight.
No problem.
And which one are you doing? The Dancy Seahorse?
Yeah.
Seahorse Lane?
Exactly. We heard the case and there was this confusion about the law, about that parcel. And they went to the planning board and fixed the lines and all that.
Correct, correct. So there was a land swap that happened and that's all been approved by the planning board. The release deed has been recorded. I worked with attorney Nancy Angus on that one. So as far as where their boundaries are and what has been presented by their engineer, that's a correct boundary of mine. How's it today?
Okay, in your professional opinion, if that ever goes to title search and stuff, would that be a problem for lot N1A to come for a variance? Because they made-
Oh, I see what you're saying. We did, we did run title. I mean, I worked with a guy, attorney Nancy Angus. We didn't see that it would be an issue. And honestly, that's on the client's, you know, at that point, it's nothing that you guys have to worry about. It's not, you know, your fault if you grant this. You gotta make, we will make sure that the correct book and page are referenced. So we'll make sure it's not going on a lot that's going on in the correct lot.
Okay, but the question I'm saying, if you are, after that $1, 1,400, 1,400 square feet after it was granted for a dollar, if they are to sell this property right now, the title search attorney who's gonna buy it or get a mortgage, whatever, are they gonna request a variance for making lot N1B, N1A non-conforming for granting that 1,400 square feet?
No, I don't believe, I didn't see it like that, Mr. Chairman.
You didn't, you don't think so?
No, I, I didn't see it like that, no. If it proves you, we can add something within our decision that there's a, if you want to prohibit against that.
Well, I can't grant a, I can't grant a variance for the other lot if they're not here. I'm gonna take it to its face value on my own and I guess if they ever get a mortgage and, or sell it and hit the wall, I guess they're gonna have to come back. That's my opinion. What do you think, Troy?
I agree.
Jimmy?
Yeah, that's, that's, we were trying to, we're trying to send off a telegraph to somebody that, that somebody better do some housekeeping housekeeping to maybe prevent that from happening. But as far as Attorney Morton stated so properly, it's really not our problem. It's just we've spotted it.
Well.
And N1A could, if somebody wanted to be a stinker and challenge it, they could create a problem.
Well, it is a problem.
It is, yeah.
In a way, the commissioner could call it off.
May I approach you for a second? I think there may be a little confusion on the discussion.
Yeah.
I think your concern that N1A wishes for Seahorse conveyed land to N1B.
Right.
That's not what happened. These two parcels weren't being claimed by anyone. So when Mr. DeVignan and his associate figured that out, they had to figure out who was supposed to own them. And because of N1B was subdivided out of N1A, it got released to N1A.
I get you.
So really, in the title and the proceedings here, both of these lots gained land because these were never?
Claimed by anyone.
Claimed by anyone.
All right.
Great.
I can agree 100% with Josh.
Thank you.
Chris, what do you think?
Thank you, Josh.
I guess we'll deal with that if it ever come back, right? Richard, do you have a comment?
All set.
All set, okay, let's move to close.
So moved.
I have a motion to close this public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi, aye. It's close. All right, decisions.
I say we can do this as a special permit based on everything I've heard now. I think we'd be better off doing it as a variance.
This is a variance, it's not. There's a part that's a variance, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a variances. There's a variance and there is?
New nonconformity.
What is it?
Yes, Counselor?
I just put it.
It's a variance, right?
Yes, it is a variance, a new nonconformity. And then there's a special permit as well.
The special permit is for the rebuilding, right?
Correct.
Correct. And the variance is all for the setback, FAR, and front and side setback, right? So we gotta grant variances.
We got two of them, set, one for set?
Front setback, variance, side setback, FAR. Three variances, correct, Commissioner?
Rear setback.
What's that?
Front and rear setback.
Front and rear.
I'm sorry.
Not side, not side.
Oh, okay, oh.
Side's good.
Side and?
Front and rear?
Side and rear.
Yes.
Front and?
For Paul's letter, Mr. Turner's letter.
It says front setback, side setback.
The steps are on the side setback. Oh, is that right? I'm sorry. I think so.
If the board wishes, we grant it as requested.
Sure.
Well, the front, the rear, what's the setback on the zoning calls for, of 10 or 20?
Over there is 10.
So they got 11'9" on the rear.
So they're fine.
No, we're proposing the overhang to be 9.2, so we are less than 10.
So you need also a back setback on the back, really.
Front, the step, I'm calling the front Seahorse Lane. I don't, am I wrong on that?
But the address, the address is Crimson Road or Seahorse Lane?
Seahorse.
It don't matter, that's a private way. You pick Crimson. We go by Crimson Road.
Okay.
You get plenty. Doesn't matter. All right, before we close, anyone in the public want to add anything on this matter? Okay, we hear none. So let's go by the variances. Can I get a motion for the variances as presented?
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to grant all variances as presented. And the finding is meets statute requirement of MGL 48, section 10. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, aye. On a special permit to demolish and rebuild, what's the wishes of the board?
Grant.
Motion to grant as presented by the plans and the finding not substantially detrimental to the neighborhood based on the letter supplied that there's no support from the neighbors. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi, aye. Counselor, can you draft a decision when you have a chance?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We need a third vote on the FAR?
That's the variance as required, all the variances.
Okay, you lumped them, okay, thank you.
All some lump, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
It was moved by me, it was seconded by who?
Second by Troy.
And we voted?
Yeah, all voted in.
Not that I'm not paying attention, but I didn't know if we just voted on closing, but we never voted on the actual.
We did the variance and the special permit and the?
Okay, okay, I was writing.
Three votes, yeah. We did three times, variance.
I was chewing gum at the same time, so I got confused.
Whoever goes for it, we worry about it then.
Yeah. Just wanted, yep. I'm good.
Thank you.
Mine's right here.
All right, 64-24, William Andrade and David Andrade. They mentioned variances for 43 and 45 Depot Street.
64-24.
Hey, boss people here. I paid my bills. All right. Give us a minute to read it.
What do we got, 64-24 we need?
Yep.
Yeah.
Next to the west.
And I'm here to answer any legal questions, but Brad can present. Is there any questions about the case? I'm here.
You representing that Counselor as well?
Yeah, I represent David as well, but I think it's more effective with Brad there being able to explain it and seeing it on the plan. But I'm happy to answer any questions in regards to the zoning.
Yeah, we let Brad present it. It's better, if we have a question, we'll call you. I mean, we'll ask you.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead.
Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11, 2024, 6:30 PM in room 520 of the Wayham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wayham, Mass. 02571, to consider petition 64-24 for a use variance, comma, dimensional variance, and a special permit from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320 and Table 351, and Article 6, Section 623 of the Wayham zoning bylaws to William P. Andrade and David A. Andrade, care of attorney Jillian Morton of 184 Main Street, Wayham, Mass., seeking relief from the board to build 100-foot by 80-foot garage on the property where an existing single-family dwelling already exists, located at 43 and 45 Depot Street, Wayham, Mass. This appears on Wayham Assessors Map 43, Lot 1064, 1065A, 1081, and 1082B in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
All right, let's hear it.
Good evening, Brad Bertola with JC Engineering on behalf of the property owner, Mr. Dave Andrade, sitting with me tonight.
Okay.
All right, this property is located at 43 and 45 Depot Street and located in the Strip Commercial Zoning District.
Yep.
The lot itself contains five separate assessors lots and totals approximately 7.7 acres of land. Property has direct frontage on Depot Street, approximately 120 feet, and also contains a single-family dwelling shown as number 43. A portion of the property is currently utilized by Mr. Andrade with his current excavating business. He keeps some equipment there, some materials that he uses for his projects. I believe some of the materials he uses and sells, like mulch and screened loam. So Mr. Andrade would like to construct a garage to complement his business and provide some interior storage space, keep some products dry, storage for some vehicles. But according to the building commissioner, this is being considered as a contractor's garage, which is not a use that's specified in the zoning bylaw. Therefore, variance will be needed to establish a contractor's garage.
Contractor's garage is not allowed in a strip commercial?
It's not defined in the bylaw. There's no description as contractor's garage. Because it's not defined as a use, whether allowed or not allowed, it's?
By default.
By default, it's not allowed, and a variance would be necessary.
Is it defined on general commercial, though?
There's no way, we need to add that to our bylaws.
It's not listed at all.
It's not listed at all.
Wow.
It's very similar to a project we presented on Cranberry Highway across from Perry's.
Yeah.
That was the same type of use. I'm not sure if the propane business?
No, the one next to it, 2707.
Yeah.
I remember that one.
Yeah. Something similar to what was approved on Chodpon Road. Similar, that was a landscaping business with this garage. He had retail on that property.
Yeah.
That customers went to it. The retail use isn't allowed use in this zoning district. Residential isn't allowed use. The bylaw allows multiple primary uses and structures under a special permit in this zoning district. So I think that basically covers the, the special permit would cover, yes, you can continue with this retail area or establish a retail area and maintain the existing residential use. But to construct the garage would be the variance.
Right.
Mr. Andrade doesn't anticipate having a storefront that people come and buy products. It's something that just gets delivered, calls up, I need X amount of yards of a certain material. And then he utilizes that same material for his own projects that he does throughout the town.
Josh, maybe we should work on bringing it to the planning board, put it on the wall for next time to fix that matter.
So?
You know what I'm saying? We should draft something because it's not defined anywhere.
I got you.
All right, very well. Go ahead, Jimmy.
So my question, I guess, my question is, what, 1082B became combined with these lots that have the house on it because the lots with the house were not big enough? So they therefore automatically combined? Is that what happened?
Yeah, they're also under the same ownership, so.
I get that they're under the same ownership.
Yes.
I get it. But they were all bought at different times, I believe. Like the house, 1064 or 1065, or they were like owned. And then when they bought 1082, because 64 and 65 weren't big enough, they just become combined?
Yes, there's only one lot that actually has frontage. The house with the, the lot with the house, 1064, actually has no frontage. It has access easement through Lot 1065B, which is owned by a different entity.
I get it. See, what happened is, there was a house here, there was a house here. They didn't own that.
Right.
But then when they bought that, I think you bought a big piece out back showing three acres, but you didn't need it to be zoning. So that didn't get combined. You own 1065A as well, don't you?
Yes.
But it doesn't have to be combined because you got enough now. I get it. So that they want, and you want to put your building, this is right beside the railroad track. You want to put your building on 1082B.
Well, it encroaches into 1065A. Because 1065A is nonconforming because it doesn't have frontage, it would?
So it's all gonna become one?
It's all considered one lot right now.
It's gonna, it's gonna end up being, this is gonna get included.
Let me ask you a question. Why don't you bring it all the way to the property line, to the railroad, and gain more land? Why you have it 30 feet away for?
I think the fire department wants access on all sides.
All sides?
All sides, yeah. They've already made a comment on that. We are, because of the size, sprinkler system will be provided. It is on towns.
They want to be able to go all the way around? Three sides is not enough for them?
They told me they want all sides.
That Wayham or Onset?
It's Wayham. Wayham.
Is it Wayham?
Yeah.
No, it's 02538, isn't it?
Who's that?
It's Beeper Street, it's Jillian. Isn't it Onset, 02538?
Wayham. I think David's right.
It's Wayham.
It's right there on the corner of Depot Street and?
Yeah, that's the fire department for Onset.
There's a fire department there, but that's not Onset, that's Wayham.
Yes.
That little, the unmanned building.
Yeah, that's a waste of land, but?
Excuse me, Commissioner?
You only want to do 80 by 100, you don't want to do bigger. You got a sprinkler anyway. Why don't you go 7,400? Then you don't have to sprinkle it.
I think the cutoff's 5,000 square feet, but?
A garage, yeah, 5,000.
He doesn't mind sprinkling, he's willing.
Who?
Richard Temple.
Oh, hi, Richard, yes, Richard.
So is this the same Onset Fire Department? That's okay to have a pull-in and back-out over at Woodland Cove?
No, that's a different fire department, that's Wayham.
Okay.
That good?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the good guys, not the Onset guys. Everybody, we gotta say what we're thinking, we can't think what we're saying.
And you comfortable with the location of it? You don't want to push it back, forward? You're happy with the location, David, there?
Yeah, I think that's a good spot.
I mean, I go by this area. You don't think it'll kill your traffic flow on that property, huh? Don't you want to push it up a little bit towards?
Towards Depot Street?
No, up towards the wetland. Don't you think Brad would be better?
I think we're trying to maintain space for the, you know, the rest of the property and not impact. I mean, the zoning setbacks in this zoning district is 20 in the front, 10 off the side and rear. We're providing 30 on the side.
No, I'm trying for his sake to have more flow, keep the area because this is gonna break his property in half, traveling with trucks and stuff. I was thinking moving it forward more towards the wetland. But that's what he's happy for, I don't care.
He knows how he uses his property, I mean?
Yeah, I'm sure he does.
I've watched him do a couple jobs, it's almost like he knows what he's doing, almost.
All right, very well. Anyone in the public in favor or against this matter? We hear none. Question?
None. I think we rubber-stamped just about everybody tonight, and I don't think he deserves anything less.
I just hate to see wasting that 30 feet, but?
Yeah, I know.
What do you think?
I'm okay.
Richard, you okay with that?
I hate to see people put brown sugar on cereal, but they do it, you know?
Okay.
You're good. All right, so we need to grant a variance for a garage?
For the garage, yes.
On the site, now, do you need the site plan for that?
Well, it's a use that we're requesting.
Yeah.
So I don't know why the building location would be important since it meets, we have room on the property to move it if necessary. I don't think it would require review from this board. It's the establishment of creating that use is what we're looking for.
All right, so you only want to use variances tonight from us? That's it?
That's all we need?
Well, we need a special permit to allow the multiple primary structures and uses on?
Because you already have houses on it?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Commissioner, you want to add something to it?
Nope, it's good.
So we got, we got to grant a special permit?
For the multiple?
For the multiple uses.
For the multiple uses. And what else?
And a variance for the garage.
And a variance?
For use. So let's close before we go forward.
Yeah, let's close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Wait, I'm sorry, hold on one sec. Just because the commissioner's letter talks about the frontage, did you guys add that on?
On the variance?
Are we shy on frontage?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to get that in there as well.
Okay.
So when we make a motion, we have to grant a variance for frontage, or? Okay.
Shy of the 150?
All right, very well. Where are we?
So we, I moved to close the public portion. Need a second?
No, second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye, Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
And Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazi, aye. And myself, Nazir, aye. Close. Okay, on the, on the used variance for a garage and a variance for the frontage, how does the board feel?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to grant the frontage variance and the used variance. Do I have a second on that?
One second.
Second by Chris. And, and discussion on that? It meets MGL 48, Section 10, for the findings. Do I have, okay, for, all in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
Myself, Nazir, aye. Variance goes.
And the use. Use in the...
And the use, sorry. Frontage and the use. On a special permit for multiple principal uses. For a special permit, how does the board feel?
Grant.
Have a motion to grant a special permit for multiple principal uses on the property by Mr. Akabachi. Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, I'm gonna abstain by carries. All right?
Five, four, zero, one. Four, zero, one.
Okay, very well. A carries. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Have a great night, guys. Thank you for the flexibility.
Just for the record, do you abstain because you guys do business, or just you want the...
Yeah.
Okay.
I abstain in both of them.
I don't know if it's just, yeah. I just didn't want anybody to get the impression...
Right. Did you abstain on the variance too?
Yeah, but you don't need my vote. So vote variance and special permit for 01.
Did you, did you abstain on both?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, we're gonna move to 64, 6524 Emanuel for 3119 Cranberry Highway.
How do you like being last?
Depends on the outcome.
You, you remember our rule is that somebody has to get denied every night.
That was the first one, get denied.
We didn't deny anything, so, so we're kind of boxed into a corner here. Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on December 11th, 2024, at 6:30 PM in Room 520 of the Wareham Multi Service Center, 48 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. 02571 to consider petition number 65-24 for a use variance from the requirements of Article 3, Table 320 of the Wareham zoning bylaws to Emanuel Mosrythis?
Mosrytras.
Mosrytras. Okay, okay Emanuel. Trustee of the EM Realty Trust, care of Brian Grady, GAF Engineering, Inc., of 266 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Proposing modification to Unit 3 to accommodate a nail and hair salon of the building located at 3119 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass. That appears on Wareham Assessors Map 8, Lot 1019.A in the Commercial Strip Zoning District.
Very well, name an address. Name an address, Emanuel. Just gotta say you name an address.
My name is Manuel Mosrytras, and I live in 29 Linden Road, PPR, Mass.
Okay.
Brian Grady, GAF Engineering.
Okay, let's hear it.
We're, we're here this evening looking for a use variance for this building. This is the Jordan Plaza Building, located just easterly of Redbrook Road. It has, it's in a commercial area. It abuts the muffler shop, Redwood Hotel. Motel is to the east. Swenson Granite across the street. The Closed Barnacle Bills is a dental implant store across the street. We're, we're seeking a use variance to get a tenant for an unoccupied Unit 3. That tenant is K Nails and Spa, and they do manicures, pedicures, scalp massage, neck massage. They do waxing. They don't do hair styling, hair coloring, hair cutting. Mostly manicure, pedicure, pedicures, facials, massages, things of that nature. That is not an allowed use in this district. That's considered a, uh, a service without manufacturing, similar to, as it states in the code, similar to hairdressing, manicuring, dog grooming, et cetera. They're kind of lumped together as a service, not allowed in this zone. In the CS, they are allowed in the CG, which is mostly in West Wareham, but it's not allowed in this zone.
That's crazy. That's something we have to fix, though. That's insane. You can't do, have a salon in East Wareham.
So the current occupant...
We should fix that, too.
Everyone just goes to West Wareham for a haircut.
And the nail.
Look into it.
Look into it, I guess.
I mean, aren't there, aren't there, um, right there at the corner where Head of the Bay Road or Redbrook Road meets? Where they just put the big intersection. Isn't there a hairdresser right there in a, in a residence, right beside the Redwood Motel?
Nah, I don't think so.
Yeah, nobody notices it's there, but they've been there since before you, you were born.
Oh, yeah, that's different.
So they're grandfathered.
So that's 30 years ago.
I thought it was 20 years ago, but, you know.
That's 30, no.
30, okay.
Yeah.
That's crazy, the whole, and, and then there was a hairdresser down where it used to be Tina's Nipahut. It's, um, they get the used, the U-Haul trucks there. They wanted to put a garage.
And Eastern Bank, next to Eastern Bank, there's a hair salon.
At Cranberry Plaza, they've got a, a hairdresser. But the zoning bylaw, they've all had to come...
I don't know how, but anyway.
Wow.
Here we are. We need a variance, right?
Need a Band-Aid on that.
Correct. Emanuel's at less than 75% occupancy for the building, losing money. He's been trying to fulfill these units for two years now, so we've got a tenant ready to go. The demolition permit's been issued already, I believe, to start work. So we seek your approval for this use variance.
It's a beautiful building.
Yeah, it is.
Beautiful.
I built it 20 years ago. All right, anyone in the public want to speak in favor or against this matter? I hear none. Okay, uh, I guess let's close.
Yeah, motion to close the public portion of this hearing.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Rich?
Excuse me for a second, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I just wanted to have a question real quick.
Go ahead.
How many people are occupying the nail place?
How many, how many customers you, you think will be anticipated to go there?
Correct.
How many cus, how many people? I know it's closed, but...
I think there's a dozen seats for manicures, pedicures.
About 12, Richard.
And then how many employees?
How many employees?
I'm not sure of the employees. Three or four, maybe. I'm not positive on that.
Say five, six at the most, looking at 18.
So is that, all that parked, is the parking sufficient in that lot?
Yeah, there's 77 spaces for that building. It's plenty.
I'm just trying to cover this, the protocol is...
Yeah, that's, yeah, you're absolutely right.
If you have that many, that's fine with me.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, but there's 77 parking spaces in that building. Okay, you good, Rich?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Uh, so that being said, let's make a motion.
So we had a motion, what was the motion to close the public?
That was to close, yeah.
Yep.
No motion to grant.
No, so we need a motion to grant...
Excuse me, I gotta finish, so yes, I'm good with the public hearing closing.
Okay.
Very well.
So now we... Thank you, Richard.
Motion for the variance.
Motion to grant a use variance to, to, I'll just say Jordan Plaza. The address is...
3119 Cranberry Highway.
Yeah.
To accommodate nail salon business. And it does meet statutory requirement of Chapter 48, Section 10. Do I have a second on Jim's motion?
Second.
Second by Chris. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Richard?
Aye.
And myself, I'll abstain by carries, 401, okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Good.
Not bad.
Phil, while you're here, on, I want to come forward quick when we have a chance.
They made you come down here. You might as well get up and come talk to us.
Just to...
If I say something, I can do it.
Right, right. Just, we need some few updates on our storage facility in West Wareham, next to Popeyes and stuff. This was done before you were here. I, the Commissioner issued a 60-day temp CO. We want to make sure that it was built, landscaped, and somehow close to what they proposed. Of course, it's never gonna be 100%, so did you have a chance to look at it?
We, we've been to the site a couple of times. We've reached out to them to discuss with them where they are, make sure they're calling us for inspections. We don't get very many calls back. But we have been on-site, and it's generally in compliance with the plan, so if you need a statement saying that, I can provide it.
Yeah, is the landscaping in the front okay? I don't see any shrubs or nothing.
So we, we were out there before the landscaping went in. We, we were actually doing a site visit next door at 2406, and we said, well, let's go over since we're here, and we did it. So we looked at the building, stormwater drainage, the parking, the curbing. The landscaping hadn't been set up yet. So we can go back and take a peek if the board would like us to.
They did do a good job with the drainage and everything, paving, but I, I just saw the whole grass. I didn't see any land, shrubs or nothing. So it'd be nice to get a clean bill of health from you.
Okay.
On other projects, how that, Mr. Higgins' project, the, next to Popeyes, it's, it's done. I see it done?
Uh, they, we've done the inspections there as well, and they, they moved very quickly through there with no, no real problems.
So maybe you could do a final report, so when they come for us, we could let them go quick?
Sure.
Uh, what else we have hanging? Did Wendy's ever came back when we visited that thing? And I don't think that 15,000 bonds have been released, right?
Has not.
It has not. It has not.
Well, make sure you don't release it.
Well, yeah, and we actually had a discussion about that today, because I had to pay one of Phil Cudero's bills out of...
That money?
No, we can't pay Phil out of a performance bond. So obviously, it came out of the planning boards, and that's not typically how his contract reads, so we had to get administrative approval on that, and it's, it's not always easy. So just keep in mind, we can't pay, we can't ask Phil to do any work out of performance bond, but you obviously wouldn't know if they had a 53G or not set up.
Well, we're not gonna release that bond.
I understand, but I'm, I'm just trying to say that we can't pay any bills out of performance bonds.
And fix what they're supposed to fix.
Yeah, because I know you had a site, um, a sidewalk.
Right. So, so that's the plan. They have to fix, pay the bills, then we release the bond. Okay, any other questions from the board? Yes, sir.
2406, I gave a, a regular CO. So in the decision letter, it just said, "Present a final as-built to me and to you," in which GAF did submit. There was no call for any review.
It is, it goes without saying. It needs inspection, goes without saying.
They actually submitted, um, they're gonna be before you at the next hearing.
All site plan reviews needs inspection. It don't have, it doesn't, we, we, for courtesy, we remind them, you need to call for periodic inspection.
Some of the decisions, you spell it out that it's required, and some you don't.
It goes without saying.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, so no one was here to, I asked Jim, I asked Mr. Semple.
Like sometimes we remember, I remember to remind them, but they should know better.
Okay, I just want to know.
But...
Excuse me, Commissioner? I, I talked to the building, well, when I was talking to the building inspector, he ran it by me. I didn't give any way. I just said I wasn't, I wasn't any person to, to give grants for anything.
Yeah. I just want to be clear, so the way I read it, I, I didn't see any way I could hold him up and not give him a permit.
And Ken confirmed as well.
Excuse me?
Ken confirmed as well.
Right.
When you were in my office.
It's not spelt out. I mean, how can I say to him, you have to go in front of...
Why don't we make it standard now? On every site plan review, we add it to our conditions. How's that?
I think you've asked for that.
That's probably the best to do.
Yeah.
Don't you have a standard thing for special permit, like?
Well, decisions, the decisions now come from viewpoint, but even our old ones, I don't think it was added on there. We added it after the fact.
All right, can we do a standard on site plan reviews? Who? Josh?
It's in viewpoint now. He's gonna have to add it on there.
Josh, can you do that? Make it standard?
Yep. Inspections required for site plan.
The newer ones have it.
Right, okay, good.
Yeah, it's all set.
All right, very well.
One more thing, I think. Were you, um, Ken had asked, I guess you were supposed to talk tonight about a potential contract issue?
Yes, I'll bring it up.
Okay, let's hear it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we, we were requested, I don't know if the board knows this, Allen and Major Associates worked for AD Makepeace about 15 years ago at the Rosebrook Business Park. We developed the All-American Assisted Living with them and the South Coast Medical. AD Makepeace has asked if we can work with them as engineer of record to develop Lot 2, which is the remaining lot at the rear of the site. Our contract with the town specifically says we can't perform work in the town, so I raised this issue through the planning directors, Sonia and Josh, and they've asked us to mention it to you to see if that was something permissible for us to work with them, because we were the engineer of record. For clarity, I would not be representing the project. It would be somebody else from my firm, so I wouldn't be here presenting in front of you, and we would assist the board in obviously finding another qualified peer reviewer. It would be a comprehensive permit 40B project. They have solicited the state for a project eligibility letter, just to be clear on what...
You know how many units it's gonna be?
180.
Is it gonna be in the nursing home?
It's, it's the vacant woodland sandwich between South Coast and the nursing home. So if you, it's sort of pie-shaped. It's the back corner off of the cul-de-sac.
Okay, we, I think we can get funds from the state for somebody to represent us. There is funds to represent the town, to, to help us.
You could get a mass housing representative to aid you in terms of reviewing a comprehensive permit. There are funds available.
Engineering as well?
Uh, so I'm not, engineering you would get from the applicant, so you would get that from AD Makepeace. So they would fund the 53G for a standard engineering peer review, but if you needed a mass housing support rep, you could get funding from the state for that.
I think they've been given funding too for engineering support, like how you support, how you help us.
They, they may, but I, I, I don't think they do, but there might be provisions that you're aware of that I'm not.
I mean, I'm, personally, I trust, that's my personal opinion. I'm okay with your work. I trust you. I don't have a problem with it. And you're gonna put your stamp on it. They're gonna put their stamp. If something goes wrong, you guys on the hook, not us. Well, I don't know the rest of the board.
So there's, my question is, um, so you have a contract with the town of Wareham?
Yes.
And the language in the contract prohibits, does it provide any remedy?
It doesn't. It says, it says that we can't undertake work within the town while we're working for you in the peer review capacity. So there's, there's no, there's no exclusions or exemptions for that, so we're asking the question.
You're probably gonna need to ask the selectman to, even if we say yes, the selectman might say no.
Well, we, so we, again, solicited through the planning director to start the conversation. Obviously, the application ultimately would come in front of this board and conservation, so I think we're just floating the trial balloons to see if the town would entertain it. It's, it's just a matter of, I guess, convenience, for lack of a better example, given our history with them for this one project.
I think that, I, I think if the selectman says yes, and the town council, I think we'll be fine.
We've pushed the question up to town council, so we're just waiting for his response.
Yeah.
It might be prudent for the board to offer a recommendation
Yeah.
to other boards and to other parties who would be making the decision. If, if the four or five of us said, no way, that Phil is an asshole. We don't want him doing that.
That Phil is not, not, not a nice guy. We don't want to make this out of the way.
It matters.
They need to know that.
Yes.
On the other hand, if we have full confidence in you, which I do, which Nazir has said, then, then the other parties that are making that decision should know that as well. So I think as a board, we should...
Make a vote, or make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation to allow this exception.
I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
That doesn't mean it's confirmation. Like I said, the council might say no, and selectmen might say no.
And, and that, and that's fine. We want to go through the motions. To be clear, an application came in front of the planning board that AD Makepeace was connected to. We obviously disclosed our previous relationship with them prior to this coming to light, and we stepped aside as peer review to avoid any conflicts of interests, you know, to make sure the town is not involved in any conflicts.
They're doing this charge permit, or they have sewer there?
We have sewer. They have sewer.
Sewer?
Yes.
All right, so Troy, you okay with it?
I don't know.
I mean, it won't be official, but you find, you comfortable with it? If the selectman, lawyer, everybody says fine?
Absolutely.
Jimmy?
I'm good, yeah.
I'm good with it.
I'm good with it.
Richard, you good with it?
No, I have a problem, because that's not our board, but if somebody hire that wants to take the initiative and say it is, then I would agree with them, but it's not on our end right now.
Right, I mean, apparently, the selectman is the ultimate, they're gonna make the ultimate decision.
When I hear that the selectmen say it's okay, I'll be on board.
Right, okay, very well. We'll wait to hear, then.
Sure.
We'll advance it.
All right, thanks for coming in tonight. Anything else, guys? Before we go open the gifts for Christmas?
Merry Christmas to all, and to all a good night.
Yeah?
Merry Christmas.
And we hope for a prosperous 2025.
Don't forget my gift.
Peaceful. I just came from the Middle East. Things going well there, too, so hopefully everything's go well for the, the rest of world, as well, as well as Russia and Ukraine. I think we're looking...
That's a mess.
I think we're looking good, and hopefully everybody lives in peace, and we have a good year.
Merry Christmas, everybody, and a Happy New Year.
Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and Happy Hanukkah as well to everyone.
Happy Hanukkah.
All right, uh, that being said, anything else before we see you in 2025?
And season's greetings to all the agnostics.
Yeah.
The audience, anything?
Sir?
No comments from either. They're just watching the other show.
Are you the one who wants to be with us?
Yes, yes, I had mentioned my previous...
Okay, did you hear the recommendation that you can't be on two boards? Come forward. Just state your name. Thanks, Phil.
Thank you, Phil.
Joseph Still, resident of Wareham, Nine Right Lane. So I talked with Josh, you reached out to Judy. There's nothing in the charter that, I, I specifically read through it, that says you cannot be on two committees at the same time. But I recently just got appointed, I'm just hoping to hear back from the select or the appoint committee to be a voting member on conservation, so now, now does it truly become a conflict? I'm a voting member on conservation, or an associate on another board, or as, as well as a voting member on another committee as well? So I'm trying to... So I'm trying to see if that's the conflict, but before, we were talking about just being an associate on one board and another board. Now it's, I have a voting position on conservation, and I mean, I still have interest in getting on the committee.
You'd rather stay with conservation if you're a voting member?
I mean, I would like to see myself on two committees, three, four, five, as many as I can.
I think it's a good practice for us.
No, not at all.
What's that, Rich?
Not at all.
Yeah, because it will come, it becomes like he said, she said, they said this, it just slows us down.
You think it brings too much clutter?
Yeah, and then we clash with each other.
Well, that's like I said, too, as a voting member, it becomes a different thing. As an associate, I could kind of see the learning curve in all of it, but...
Well, if you're a voting member, I'd stay there.
I just got that recently, so, you know, some things are changing, but...
Thanks for trying. We'll let you know.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right.
I, on that matter, I don't believe there's anything in our charter or any policies in writing that would prohibit it. But I do agree with the chair and Richard that there are potential, potential...
Problems.
Conflicts.
Yeah.
Not conflicts. It gets hard.
You know, having seen what goes on in some other towns and having seen, you know, some towns where there are members that are on multiple boards, and a person on multiple boards can end up becoming more powerful than you'd want to volunteer to be, not, you know. So it's too bad, 'cause I really would have appreciated having you on the board, but if you ever decide to make a swap...
Well, maybe in the future, we can figure something out.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Things are changing every day, so...
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Merry Christmas.
Thanks. Merry Christmas.
Motion to close.
We have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Troy. All in favor, say aye. Troy?
Aye.
Jimmy?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris? Richard?
Aye.
And myself, Nazir, aye, and thank you.
Hope you feel better, Richard.
Thank you for a great year, and we'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Raposo.
Merry Christmas to all the Wareham media guys.
Thanks, Rich.
Troy, I need to come in for anyone.
Noah, Johnny.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Appreciate it, Rich.